My watch and I established that we have a quorum, we have two council members in the room present in person. And we have the other two council members present via Zoom online. So I will call the special meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up on our agenda this evening is who our consent agenda. And under consent agenda, we have minutes from our seven five twenty twenty two regular city council meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes?
Yes.
Were there any questions or corrections or comments regarding the minutes?
And number six looked like it wasn't quite finished as an end without a period at the end of. It looked like there maybe was one other statement that was going to be made there that.
Oh, yeah.
That locked off.
We'll have to, I'll have to talk to Danielle about what that would be. Uh, so if you wanna defer.
We'll defer the approval of of the seven five minutes until we can answer that question. Thank you.
I don't wanna be the grammar.
No, it's alright.
No, it's good.
No, it's important because there's uh clearly there was something meant to be added there. Okay, uh, second item were vouchers totaling five hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars nine cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers?
Yes.
Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Okay. Third item is transformer purchase three hundred KVA, three-phase pad mount. From Midwest Electrical Transformer Service at a cost of twenty two thousand nine hundred ninety seven forty. And Mr. Styles, is there any comment about that?
Uh, no, this is a replacement um for one that we putting into service for Tabor for the new dorm project. So we'd like to have one in the yard and we put the one from the yard and put in there.
Very good. Any other questions regarding the transformer? Fourth is appointment of Mandy Bernhardt to the Hillsborough Public Housing Authority. And my apologies to Ms. Bernhardt and the Hillsborough Public Housing Authority, because this should have been done a couple meetings ago, so. My apologies, uh, I had talked to Gay about this and and uh just slipped slipped through the cracks, so. That we have that appointment and then we also have an appointment of Mr. Keith Ebel to the Museum Advisory Board. Sir, anybody uh that has any questions or comments regarding the appointments or any of the other items of the consent agenda? So I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the minutes from our seven five twenty two uh meeting.
Make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll let Mr. By. Second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed. The consent agenda with the exception of the minutes is approved as submitted. We will come back to the uh the uh agenda at our next meeting. Uh, we now I have arrived at our public comment uh opportunity. And uh I see we have people in the uh room that are not on the council, but I believe they're here for other agenda items. Is that correct?
Uh, and with the exception, Mr. Lockwood.
She's first time being here and I. I wanna see how it works.
Okay, well, great. Well, we're glad to have you, David. Appreciate it. Um, and I see no uh public members on on line, so we will move on. To item D, Department Head Annual Report. And this is going to be a barn burner by Morgan Marler, our water sewer superintendent.
Where would you like for me to stand?
Right here. There if you would.
Really?
Yeah.
United podium?
Yes, ma'am. Pretty official.
Now I'm kind of hurt.
Help you there wanting to do that.
I'm coming.
Okay. This will advance you.
I probably need one of those.
Okay.
So I am Morgan Marler. I don't think I've met everybody. Um, I think I've met Mr. By. There's I've I've met maybe a time or two. Um, I've been here for twenty three years. Um, all of a sudden, after last year's mass um exodus of retirements. Uh, I all of a sudden was the the eldest one left. Um, so um, and I've also uh this year have been uh pleasantly surprised of being able to be staffed at a hundred percent. Um, so we've had a great year, um mostly consumed with training. It takes about two years for. Excuse me, it takes about two years to become staffed in the water um department on the treatment side. Um, so we have a um. What am I saying? We have two new kids um that have been here for about a year, another one for two years and um. A third one we hired just a few months ago that has nine years' experience um in surface water treatment. Um, and on the the second to the last page there, I added a little bit of information and. For you to read at home when you're losing your time, because so is I been. Um, about the staffing and cert- and the certification process, um typically. Confusing for most people, um the different steps and so the certification process and then the length of time it takes to become certified. Um, all four of the new employees will be able to qualify for sitting for their certification test this fall. Um, Jason Wheeler uh will be able to um be certified at level three, which is the appropriate level for our water treatment plant. And then Trent Miller uh after his second year employment can sit for his class two certification. And then Caleb Spencer and Craig Bays are both going to sit for their class one sewer license in the fall. And Joe Alvarez, we're going to be losing him in December. He's retiring. He currently holds a class two certifications. So there's a little description there of the the amount of time it takes and the um the amount of hours and. Education for that process. Um, we were going through, it was kind of hard. We've been doing an awful lot of projects. It was kind of hard for us to really um. Recall what we've done beyond the last three or four months, um but we put together some pictures for you. And um I went through a summary for the water production, water distribution, water sewer. Um, how do I get this baby started back? Just touch the.
Click. Should be able to just click. There you go.
Uh, anytime we're go- I'm just winging all of this if you can't tell, so anytime uh you have a question or a comment, just please holler and interrupt me. And I'm gonna start off with the big emergency water crisis that we had um about a month ago. Um, it's a nine-day process where we were trying to troubleshoot. We had a um. A restriction in the flow from the water plant to our underground storage. We went from being able to get six hundred gallons a minute through the plant. Down to sixty gallons a minute into our underground storage and we discovered this big twenty-four inch valve. That needed to be replaced and then also a vault in front of that's located in front of the underground storage. Um, that needed to have some check valves and butterfly valves replaced and tho- all of those appurtenances were causing the restriction in flow. So we reached out to our friends in the contractor world and our engineering friends and they helped us get together a. A crew of people that came in and cut out a valve, this new orange valve going in, uh excuse me, this is the old valve coming out. Um. There it is on the left as it was cut out. The the picture on the right was kind of a handy dandy tool they brought in. It's a diamond blade chain that they use to cut the the um cast iron pipe out of there. And then they just lifted it up out of there with the crane and then the new butterfly valve is placed there um in its place. And so that whole project overall took about seven hours um to do that. And as we skipped on to the. During that process, we had to, can I go back on this?
Um, yeah.
I don't wanna jump ahead and see all the exciting chlorination, but. Uh, during that process, we had one crew that worked on um. Doing the pipe repairs and cutting and getting all of that stuff out and then we also had another crew that actually ran. Piping from the exterior of the building, a contact chamber. Uh, we had piping and pumps above ground that way into the underground storage and we had. Uh, we used trash pumps that we sterilized that we use for water leak purposes. We sterilize those and we also um use the fire truck. What's the proper name for that truck?
That was the ladder truck.
The ladder truck. We used the ladder truck, um that was able to pump up to a thousand gallons a minute for us and we did that twenty-four hours a day for those nine days pumping that water. Excuse me, for the city of Peabody and for the city of Hillsborough. Um. What kind of questions you have about that event, if any, from? From hearing about it in the news or from hearing about it from from Matt?
I don't have any questions. I have some comments. And and uh the comments that I have are. Uh, the pride that I felt in our in in you and your team and our whole staff, whole city crew that came up with these ingenious methods.
Yeah.
Just to get around a problem while we were in the process of finding the right appurtenances, as you call them, which uh are not. Supply chain issues uh notwithstanding or not hard, not easy to come by.
Yeah, they were hard to locate at the time.
So, you know, my comments are again, uh and and I made them to you at at lunch the other day, but uh. I was just proud, pleased and and just. You you mentioned a water water problem. Well, it was a water problem that nobody knew about because it never became a problem because you guys figured a way around it. Until you could deal with it, so hats off and again, uh congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you. And you reminded me during that that we, I forgot to mention that we did have um tremendous assistance from the rest of the crews um. Dale Dahlke and Todd Helmer both assisted with their crews and with their equipment and expertise, so. Um, and they usually do step in when whenever needed it was. And troubleshooting with them is always fun, hearing their different perspectives and. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. I thought it was kind of fun. Um.
Let's not do it again.
Let's not do it, you know, but it was kind of fun to be able to to get through it and work with everybody. Um, and and otherwise, I'm just kind of gonna go down this list and maybe ex- explain a few things as I go through the list. Um, I've I've broken it out between production distributions and sewer. Um. Number three on the list. Okay, number three on the list. Um, we built a secondary chlorination feed system. That's that on the left there. Uh, we did that in January and February. We had a a contractor quote of seventeen thousand five hundred to do that. And we built it ourselves for just the material cost, which was four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And the secondary chlorination feed system uh has allowed us to handle the iron and manganese influx that we've started getting at the beginning of the summer. Um, the year before, the iron and manganese was really debilitating for us. Because we could not deliver enough chlorine and so it was important for us to kind of remedy that situation during the winter before we knew it was coming again. You know, in the subsequent summer, so. That is something that Trent Miller put together and did. Um, he had the assistance of the Kansas Water Association technical staff to help him. Put that together and and make sure that that operated properly. But number four, those are two big air scour blowers at the water plant and we had a contractor quote for replacement for sixty-five thousand dollars. And um with our staff and our contractors assistants, um we rebuilt those and added soft starts to those. For a cost of seventeen thousand five hundred. And so those should last another twenty years for us. We use those air scour blowers to um. Air scour and then backwash the filters in the um water treatment plant. So those were original to the nineteen eighty-one plant. Um, you can't get new parts for them. We were gonna have to completely uh replace them a hundred percent. Um, at a a pretty large capital cost, so. Found a good old dude contractor who had the parts and he helped us get it done and. Thank goodness he saved everything since the seventies, right? Um, let's see, next one, okay. This is a bank of online turbidometers. We purchased these with our um. Oh, the waterline project that was associated with the water meter replacement project from a year or so ago. Um, and they've kind of been sitting on the shelf for a while until we had time to install them. They don't really look like much, but these are, this is a big deal for us. This is an upgrade in the treatment process that allows us to. Take readings of the cleanliness of the water at different stages throughout the plant. And it takes that measurement every three minutes and then it data logs it into our SCADA system. So we can create graphs and charts and and track the cleanliness of the water at different stages and it it ties into our um. Phone dialer system of alarms, so it can call us in the middle of the night if it it exceeds a set point. Um, so this was a, this was a great addition for us. Um. Sometime in the winter, we'll be cleaning that up and and sandblasting and and painting that wall back there. Later on, I'll show you some other pictures of the plant. Um, where the walls and the pipes look pretty degraded, but. Um, we have, we have plans for that ugly wall. So uh the cost of those was twenty-five thousand dollars and again, that was paid for um through that project. The installation cost for that, for the Hawk team to come out and do that was about fifteen thousand dollars and we did the installation for free. We use the Hawk video series and um technical assistance. They walked us through. Um, online and over the phone when we ran into snags in the installation process on that, but. Um, with a couple of overnight work periods, we got those installed, nailed ones taken out. Um, number six, I handed out a copy of the uh annual com- consumer confidence report that went out in the June. Uh, utility bills. We put that out every year as mandated by EPA, federal EPA, and then passed on down to. Uh, state KDHE. And so in that document, we have to list anything um. Any violations that we've had throughout the year and we also have to list our analytical results. Sometimes the council people get hit by their customers for water quality uh information. Um, you might have questions about that since they've received it in their utility bill recently. We uh by law were required to keep these at city halls, so um Karen has those at her desk and she can give those out to customers. We give them to. New customers when they sign up for utility bill service and then we also have them out in the um lobby out here on the table for people to pick up. Uh, number seven, this is our second year participating in um uh raw water analysis with the WSU Environmental Resource Center. And Kansas University and also, I believe, the Kansas Biological Survey. Um, so every day until the uh, I think the beginning of October, every day we pull samples. And they analyze those for nitrogen phosphorus, iron manganese and also um some um. Fluorophyll A that is associated with the harmful algal blooms. Um, and there those organizations are doing those um in hopes of better under understanding, understanding the limnology of the reservoir water. And this is our third year. We just started the third season of our partnership with KDHE for the harmful algal bloom toxicity testing. For micro system, annabina and cylindrical spromopsin. And this is um the first year that we're partnering with them for antitoxin and saxitoxin testing. I think that we're one of three. In the Midwest that are doing those tests for them. So the states, so EPA and the state are kind of branching out and they're um. They're adding to their repertoire in their lab of the different types of algal bloom toxins that they can test for. And so they have um, they have invested the 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 money and the equipment to test for more of those toxins in the state. And so if they pick up these two, the antitoxin and saxitoxin in the Marion Reservoir and the other two rev- reservoirs that they're doing. They'll probably broaden that horizon to other um reservoirs in the state. I'm sure you probably get lots of questions maybe from uh residents about the reservoir or the. The algae blooms. Do you hear a lot from residents about that, customers? Seems like every time I go to the grocery store, somebody wants to know.
Phone calls, yeah.
So um if if you do, you can always um, you can always uh refer them to the KDHE website. Uh, they have a banner up on that page. And that pops up right off the bat that will uh share with them, the people who log on will share with them. Which reservoirs in the state are going through the different phases of warning and watches and whether or not that they, whether or not they can um. Go to the reservoir, so that's an easy resource to remember to to pass on to the customers if you can. Um, okay, that's it for the water production stuff. We've got a few things coming up that you're probably um. That you probably know about already, the one point one million dollar project for the emerging contaminants. That's the hundred, hundred percent forgivable loan. We're um going to try and use a new treatment technology to help us with the iron and manganese removal and also the toxin removal. So we're pretty excited about that um. That opportunity coming up for us. We also have a big capital improvement projects that capital improvements project that we've been working on where we'll rehabilitate our high-service pump station. Uh, that was not rehabilitated in two thousand and five, so it is original from the nineteen eighty-one plant. Um, and then we'll also do some piping modifications that will allow our clarifiers to run in series for improved performance. And we're hoping to include the installation of new generator at the raw water pump station. Right now, we have a nineteen sixties tractor PTO. Can I say thingy?
Yeah, that's a technical term for it.
Farmer PTO thingy that that runs our pump station out there, which has worked very, very well over the years, but it's outdated and we can't, we can't get parts for it anymore. Um, let's see. Been a picture here. Okay, so this was part, this, the picture is here. This is um, this is in the vault where we had the restriction for the twenty-four inch line. Um, this piping, um, you can see Caleb and Trent there. They've taken out a section of pipe with a butterfly valve and a um. A check valve. We're going to. Sure. So there's the new piping and the new check valve. Um. Uh, when we were looking for parts, we had to get one of those in Oklahoma and one in Kansas City. To bring those back and get those in line. That that was mostly what was restricting the flow there. Um, going into the underground storage and on the right, uh, the right side there in that picture. That's the remaining butterfly valve and check valve that still needs to be replaced going into the city of Hillsborough's Clearwell. And we are going to do that ourselves. Um, we just got a um contractor estimate of ten thousand dollars to replace that. And the cost of the materials will be thirty-nine hundred dollars and we have that scheduled for the um third week of August to do in-house. So when we, when we do that particular change out, we'll also, we'll also have to revert back for a twenty-four hour period, period. We'll have to revert back to. Pumping the water with a fire truck or the trash pumps above ground into the Clearwell so we can bypass this fault and those check valves. Exciting? Um, number four, uh, we're gonna be sandblasting the interior of our pipes and the walls. Um, we've been pretty busy the last four years with lots and lots of projects in town. Um, and we have not done a lot of preventive maintenance in here and and paint touch-ups. Most of what you see is carbon. Um, that has drifted over on the pipes. Um, so we'll be encasing the whole carbon feeder in um kind of a wrap so that the carbon dust doesn't go over everywhere in the plant. And then we'll be sandblasting and painting these pipes in the walls. Um, then on the next page, the water distribution system. Uh, right now, we're working on the Washington Street. Water line. The, this is an old nineteen twenties cast iron four-inch line that's installed from. Um. Right about the dentist office and then it goes all the way south um to D Street. So that is all old four-inch cast iron line all the way to D Street. Then at D Street on south is new eight-inch PVC. So we're taking the opportunity now to change out that old line and install um six-inch C nine hundred pipe. Um, in lieu of the the splash pad project occurring. Um, because Dale will be coming in with new concrete street there and new um parking spaces there, so we wanted to make sure that we got that water line. Replaced in that one block stretch. Look at those guys working so hard.
They got that pretty well installed today, didn't they? Yeah.
Yep. So we'll couple, uh, we will tie into the, we have to do a a tee, a four-inch tee and we'll tie into the duplexes across the street to the east. And then we're going in with a three-inch line to serve the new splash pad. And then we're also sticking sticking in a couple extra taps that'll go on the grounds out there for any sort of future water use that somebody might need for irrigation or whatever. We thought that we ought to stick in a couple of taps now and get them out there so we didn't have to cut the street open, open again. Um, number two, we're also installing two automated flush hydrants in the, in different areas of the distribution system where we have. A low flow and low usage and where we have water quality issues. When we flush hydrants, we get a lot of customer complaints for wa- for wasting water. So we've picked a couple of different um types of automated flush hydrants to try out. Um, the contractor estimate to do these two is fifteen thousand dollars and the cost for us to do it in-house is going to be forty-two hundred. Which is just the cost of the the flush hydrants. So we'll pick our two worst areas of town and we will put the timer on those to flush those at night and hopefully um. Reduce the customer complaints for um uh water loss or, you know. And. And then the radio read meter installation project, number three. I think I can say we are, we're still fine tuning this. We have some problem meters out there in the distribution system. I think we're about down to a ninety percent, ninety-nine percent accuracy rate. Would that be about correct, current Karen? Well, every month it seems like we get a little bit better, I think, on those. Uh, we still have a a few of them out there that are problem children for us. Um, we occasionally are getting some lawnmower hits on the radio. Uh, apparatus that is installed on the top of the meters. When we first started that project, the first two hundred and fifty meters that we installed. Had the radio re- the radio device installed through the meter on the top and then we switched to installing them below ground. Um, so we have two hundred and fifty of those. Um, they do get hit by customers and the cost to replace those are about a hundred and fifty dollars each when they do that. Um, so a- as they're, as they are hitting those and destroying them, then we'll reinstall them in the meter pit um for them and. And do it that way. But overall, uh, putting the radio read, the radio mechanism in the meter pits has worked out pretty well. There are only a couple of areas in town where where that hasn't really suited us, but I think that's been a a good um investment for us. It's saved a lot of time. I think it's still up in the air about how much extra money we're making or how much extra water we're moving. Will probably take us another year or two of of audits of the meter system. Of the meter systems of the. Um.
Sales.
Billing system, yes, thank you. Uh, it'll ta- a couple more years um of auditing the the billing system before we can really nail down whether or not we've um increased our sales from that. On the sewer side of things, um, we recently pigged that line from the old sewer plant to lagoons, which hadn't been done. Um, since it was installed in two thousand and nine and that really improved our flow to the lagoons from the old sewer plant. By almost two hundred gallons a minute, so we got an increase of flow out to the lagoons. Uh, oh, that's one one. Um, we, you'll remember, um. We installed the air blowers and the baffles out of the lagoons. And we're just now um starting to see positive results from that. The. The waste has traveled all the way through the lagoons. It's been the hundred and twenty days and now we're starting to see that the lagoons. Um, have better analysis, lab analysis in those um, the factors that we tap, we test there. Uh, the lagoons are no longer gray and smelly and disgusting. They're nice and bright and green and pretty, so. Um, we're hoping that within the next couple of months that those numbers are really gonna come in for us um. On the BODs and solids and ammonia. We've been pleasantly surprised so far at what we're seeing out there. Um, we've also developed uh standard operating procedures and the preventative maintenance program for the nine lift stations in town. Um, when we took over the department, we found a lot of the phone dialers in the lift stations were inoperable. Or emergency notifications, so we've gotten all of those um phone dialers fixed and repaired and all of those can now call out for an emergency situation. Before they overflow. And then within the last maybe three weeks, we've placed about eight, we've replaced about eighty feet of sewer main. From the industrial road to the Lutheran lift station. from the industrial road to the Lutheran lift station. Um, we did that in-house with our crew, we had experienced four leaks on that um in a matter of months, so we just took a whole section out and put new, new pipe in. And then Caleb has in, uh Caleb Spencer, Spencer has implemented a manhole survey of the entire town to help us determine which manholes need to be raised to prevent any rainwater infiltration into the sewer system. As one of those things that we need to improve with KDHE and EPA is um trying to keep our rainwater out of our sewer system so that it doesn't become inundated, so he's going through um and doing a manhole survey and we're starting to raise up some of those manholes that haven't been seen for twenty or thirty years, maybe they've been paved over or they've been re-gravelled over in an alley, so we're locating them and then we're getting them raised up so that they're at the proper elevation. Um, we were really gung ho at the beginning, beginning of that project, but we're finding that it's taking a lot of time. We've also worked with a couple of different industrial users to um reduce large amounts of paper towels and wipes that have been clogging up lift stations. I brought a couple of pictures here. I didn't have my act together enough to give them there on the PowerPoint, um, but just as I was um, leaving the office, that, that showing um the lift station out on industrial road, we are routinely, routinely getting between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty wipes out of those lift stations, they clog the pumps and they clog, clog the vacuum pumps, they overheat and then the whole thing doesn't work and it overflows onto the ground and we have to make a KDHE report. So we've been working with our industrial users and they in turn have changed a lot of policies in-house and they've kind of changed how they do things in the building and where they allow access to those wipes. So we're hoping that in the next couple of months we'll see benefit from that, we also had one industrial loop user that had a um a foaming product that they were using, you know, and it was really bubbling up in the lift station, we've worked with them and their chemical supplier to come up with an alternative to that, because that was also preventing the lift stations from working, it was uh clogging up the vacuum pumps. Um, so the future projects for the sewer are going to continue to work on the inflow and infiltration of the rainwater. Um, and hopefully come in compliance with KDHE, EPA requirements and we'll work closely with the engineer to improve the lagoon performance, um, he's been helping us do some alternative operations out there that have actually helped our lagoon performance and so we'll continue to work on that. And then, um, we do, uh, number three and four. We do want to restart these abandoned programs, um, I don't know how many years ago they were abandoned, the rehabilitation, the old lift stations and lining of the sewer lines. And then also routinely cleaning the sewer mains in town um with our own staff and our own equipment, we'll, we'll do. Then, and the lines have been, or the sewer lines have been relined, but we need to um probably get mayor services in to help us restart that program. And kind of chip away at the ones that, that still need the work. Um, then I listed the staffing and certification requirements there and I think probably um about the only upgrades that we are still needing in the next few years are an upgrade to this truck. Which everybody loves, by the way, those boys fight over driving this thing. And uh, that, the first one's a nineteen eighty-nine Dodge Ram and then this Ford F-two fifty. The, the expenses for keeping these guys running is getting pretty hefty. Uh, this is a picture of our new um valve maintenance trailer and our um new back trailer. I was going to highlight the new backhoe in a previous picture, so you guys could um check out the new backhoe that you bought, I think you'd be happy with it. Um, so this is, uh, this valve trailer will take out in the field to exercise valves with, we can also pull the tops of the hydrants and um redo the hydrants without having to do that manually and then this big, this big centerpiece here is a, uh, where we can suck up um dirt and debris and we can also um, you know, suck out manholes. You can use it for sewage or dirt and debris, so this is an alternative to the big vac truck that we have that will help us get into um smaller tighter spaces. With the um with the addition of the um uh, it's the new internet fiber optic, that with the addition of the new fiber optic lines, it's been really hard for us to get in and do um like meter repairs, small repairs with our backhoe. So this is going to be very important for us because it has a small wand and a small nozzle and a small section hose. And we can just do, we can have a very small footprint in a customer's yard to make those repairs. We don't have, there's no danger of us getting wrapped up in the fiber optic line. And then we can replace the customer's yard um a little easier than, than whether, than if we had used the big backhoe. A couple of pictures of our shop because we just had our inspection and everything looks so clean. Um, this is a spare parts for the water plant, uh, this is the car shed where we keep lots of our extra chemicals. As you know, we buy our chemicals directly from the supplier and usually get them by the semi-load. Um, that makes it really tight for storage space for us in here. Uh, this is our distribution shop, our distribution shop where we have all of the pertinences for doing everything in the distribution system, replacing lines, um, this is poly pipe that we use for service lines to customers. Saddles, that sort of thing, repair clamps. More water pipe, you know, pieces and parts. On the backside of the shed, um, in the fall, we plan to, to build a lean-to um on the backside of the shed where we can move some of those uh pieces and parts that don't need to be in the building. And then hopefully buy um larger quantities of chemicals to store in that building. Um, with the hopes of getting the chemicals a little cheaper than what we are now. That's it. I feel like I talk really fast.
I'm always amazed at the ground you guys cover.
We do a lot of stuff. Any questions? I can tell it your eyes.
Feed there or?
No, uh, no, I just did, oh.
See the other council members, sorry.
Yeah, we, uh, most, all the stuff that you saw, we've done since probably about February. Um, and we've, and we've got a, a list that's probably two miles long of more projects that we want to do, so we've got a great crew, um, they like to keep busy and they like tackling projects, so it's all fun. Just keep giving us money to do it.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay to admit that solving problems can be fun too, so.
Yes, yeah, it's not that nerdy.
We prefer the hundred percent forgivable allowance.
Of course, don't you? Yeah. Yeah.
I'm excited too that, uh, that, because again of the work of you and your team that we're putting Hillsborough kind of at the front uh cutting edge of, of this, of this study and, and this potential new treatment program that KDHE can hopefully get approved and will help all of us and, and other communities, we're not the only community that battles
No.
iron and manganese, so.
Yeah, there, we, there are a number of them that are starting to develop the iron and manganese, it seems like we're maybe three or four years ahead, so hopefully the data that we produce will assist them with that. We spent some time on the phone the other day with the city of Winfield who was just starting to get iron and manganese into their plant, so we helped them out with their chemical sequencing to maybe alleviate, alleviate that a bit and
And that's another thing you probably don't talk about, but uh, you, uh, you, you get a lot of calls from a lot of different places and I always appreciate that you're willing to share your knowledge and expertise with other communities to help them out.
Yeah, it's fun, it's a fun part.
Let's, let's hope that uh mess ups.
Our experience.
My experience, yeah, okay, any other questions? What about you Barney, you always have a question.
No, I just uh wanted to say, I think it's pretty good that we're state and what else talks you to get on the cutting edge of projects, I think that speaks highly of your work.
Sure does, yeah. It's not just me, it's everybody, they all work really hard.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Hey, next item up is our business section and uh first item is, uh, we have Crystal Hinnan from Ranson City Code with us this evening. And uh she's got some grant writing proposals to uh, to present. Welcome.
Thank you. Matt, do you want to give a little overview or?
Uh, well, I, I, we've kind of talked about it quite a bit, uh, with strategic plan as far as the childcare center that we're, we're working on at Trinity uh Mennonite church and there's a partnership with that and then I sit on the board for the five oh one C three that is officially running that, uh, we're in the process of collecting capital donations in order to, to re refurbish Trinity uh to have a ninety-nine child daycare facility there, so uh the, the kind of the overall target for that or the estimate that we have based on our uh preliminary architectural conversation is about two million dollars. Uh, I think that might be a little on the high side, but anything anymore, I don't know if that's anything on the high side anymore, so um, one of the things we did was engage with Ranson uh to talk about community development block grants, which the city has had in the past. Uh, most recently, we had the community development block grant for the COVID uh support for businesses, you probably remember that, we had about a hundred and fifty thousand giveaway for that.
I remember my face from that.
Yeah. Um, and so what we've done is, is had a couple of conversations with Ranson about the CDVG for childcare, which is a big focus for CDVG this year. And um, you know, I guess the ask here from, from the board of the uh childcare facility uh is whether or not the city, we has, we have to sponsor it, uh, if we're going to apply for the grant, the city has to sponsor it. Uh, but whether or not the city is willing to, to pay for the grant writing portion of it. Uh, which is kind of what Crystal's going to talk to us about today.
Yes, that and um the only cities and counties can put in applications which sponsor for someone else, say a business or the five oh one C three, only cities and counties can apply. Um, so the board requests that you guys sponsor their application, which basically means you're the pass-through for the daycare center. Um, and the daycare center would be to be able to apply to get their building up and running. Um, so I am here today to kind of talk about a little bit of, of your daycare crisis, which is the paperwork that I've put on your table, so one of the things that CDVG is doing. They really want to focus on childcare, it's one of their main categories this year. But they have a specific pot of money just for childcare. Um, one of the things we have to prove in the application is that you are in a childcare deserted area. Um, so what the childcare aware does, it kind of gives you an overview of your county. We have to, and it, it's only by county that they do. But right now, you have enough daycare providers or positions open for children to cover thirty-two percent of your children in your county, which shows that you do not have enough daycare options in your county. This is good for you because they want to be able to fund where the need is and Marion County is one of them. So this is really good for your application. So basically, what I'm here today is I would need two motions, one of them would be that the city would like to sponsor the application for CDVG. Um, now we will go to an application workshop in, in September. And this is where we get the additional information for each application. Right now, they are proposing that the applications are due February first and they will make the announcements around March first. Very short time period, I'm expecting it a little later in March, but we will find out um definite information when we go to the application workshop. The second would be, um, if the city would pay for the grant writing portion for Ranson Financial to put in the application for the childcare center. You guys have any questions about the application process or sponsoring? You look like you have questions. Okay.
Did you talk about the matching part of it, the amount of funds that we're talking?
So the minimum amount that the childcare center, the five oh one C three would have to match is twenty-five percent of their grant award. So the maximum amount they could ask for from CBG is six hundred thousand dollars. So the, the childcare center would have to match twenty-five percent of that. Um, now from what I understand, they have the funds for that, um, which is fantastic. The other things we talked about is um USDA funding, now they do not have any kind of grant or loan forgiveness, so they really are wanting to focus on the CBG application currently.
So, yeah, uh, the childcare group, we've, we've been talking, we had a meeting last night with businesses, unity uh to talk about donors, we have a couple of, of we think fairly significant donations uh pending, they're not in hand, I would say that. Uh, but they, you know, as a group, we felt pretty confident we could at least raise the one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, we're actually talking as a, as the board about matching a dollar for dollar, so six hundred thousand.
Which will benefit the application.
Make it a stronger application, uh, they that might be a little bit more challenging based on, you know, the, the number. Uh, but the, the group feels pretty strongly that they can at least meet that twenty-five percent of the application by the time it goes in.
Yeah, and basically, the more money you can throw in, the more points you get, which brings you higher in that application process. So we're really hoping that, that they get some big donors that, that come in, but they can at least match right now, right? Right, currently they can match the thirty percent.
With, with what we're anticipating, yes, but.
Right. So at a minimum, they could match the twenty-five percent, we're hoping that they can fund some more, it'll make their application look better.
Did I, did I miss the part where the financial component of the ask of the council?
Yeah, so.
Do we know what, 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 what's your requirement then for the grant writing piece?
Um.
That you're asking for funding.
Yeah, not, and not to exceed figure of seven, seven, seven thousand five hundred. Uh, it's an hourly rate, they charge eight, eighty, eighty-five dollars an hour, uh, with a not to exceed of seventy-five hundred, which would be what the council would be asked today, if that's something you want to, to support. And it's important to note with any community development block grant that uh administration is another piece of this, but the grant funds can actually pay for well, the total funds with that project can pay for the grant administration, which is a separate piece.
Yes, so that one come out of your pocket at all, that could come right out.
The only ask for the city is, is that would we do the seventy-five hundred to write the grant?
And then we'd need a separate motion that you would sponsor the application.
So the seventy-five hundred commitment is going to be due whether we receive the grant or not, correct?
Yes.
Sponsorship would be completely no financial obligation, you're just saying we'll sponsor that and then the, the childcare center would have to come up with seventy-five hundred.
You guys would basically be the pass-through.
Yeah, I understand that, that part, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we're making financial decisions that we, that it's clear.
Absolutely.
The, the amount of money that we're talking about, so. Any questions from the council?
So how much CDVG money is there out there?
Right now, they have three million dollars in the pot.
And this, this would be a significant piece of that.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, six hundred thousand if you were to get awarded.
Yeah, the maximum amount, because what they do is they take your population, um, so the maximum amount for your population, you could go up to six thousand, six hundred thousand dollars.
So, uh, as far as the development of the center, um, you know, the, the total cost to renovate for the complete facility is, is approximately two million dollars. Uh, we've also got it where we can work it in phases and so if there was less money that came in or we have, you know, fewer resources, we'd still be able to open the doors. Uh, remodel portion of the building, open the doors, get going and then continue to raise capital to, to finish the project essentially.
So if you did that partially, you, you wouldn't have as many kids.
You couldn't house, yeah, you couldn't have as many spots, that would be part of the deal.
But at that point, we could write a second application as a phase two as well.
Question.
Oh, I just wondered, how many? It's three hundred and forty-six, is that the number of kids that need to go into, would like to be parents, like kids are getting.
In your county.
In this county?
Yes.
Okay, those parents would like those kids to be in childcare.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, they're just not kids that you're counting.
Right, yeah. So technically you only have thirty two percent of those slots open.
Right.
Yeah, available.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there's, there's some components too. If you're, if you're wondering why the number is ninety nine, there's some, there are some trigger points when you get above ninety nine that, that add another level of complexity and expense to the project. So that's why the number's ninety nine instead of something else.
Now, one of the requirements we should mention, um, for this childcare is fifty one percent of those enrolled need to be low to moderate incomes based on their taxable income. So this project would help your most needed community members as well.
I think, uh, but again, any questions, David or Blake?
Uh, I guess maybe I do have one. So you're applying for this grant. That's, what was it? Seven thousand dollars?
That we have seven thousand is this would be the city's commitment for, uh, for them to, uh, do the grant writing and, and the application.
So what happens if for some odd reason we don't get the grant? What happens to that seven thousand?
It's gone. Yeah.
Okay.
We're out seven thousand.
Got it.
Now, if for some reason we do need to apply again, we would be able to reuse and update that application. So it wouldn't cost near as much. And that's why we do the not to exceed and we charge by the hour. Because if, if we can reuse this, because the applications are very labor intensive, but if we can reuse that, it's going to be a lot cheaper to be able to reapply.
David?
Yeah. I don't know if I have any questions. I, I, I think I understand what's going on. So what we need to do is approve that seven thousand dollars to move ahead is what we're saying.
The, that's, that's one thing. The sec, the first thing we need to do is agree to be the sponsor so that we could be the pass through. As I understand it, that's item one.
Also the application.
Sponsor the application. Number two then is to agree to ransom terms to, uh, to, uh, pay them not to exceed seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand five.
Seven thousand five hundred, pardon me, for the grant application and writing process.
Mm-hmm.
Is everybody that clear?
That's clear.
Okay, so, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, one question is, is six hundred, if we go for six hundred, can they do a partial award or is it six hundred or nothing?
Well, we'd like to set it up in phases plus add-ons.
Okay.
So, um, if it does come in, that's going to cost two million dollars to rehab this building, then we can set it up as phases. Um, that way it is a portion. So we want to go for the first time for six hundred thousand dollars and only do a section of the building, then we can do a different phase into the other parts, um, as a different application.
So my question is more around if C B, if, if they would award a partial award.
A partial. I have seen them do that sometimes.
Okay, so you're not going all or nothing, I guess.
Not necessarily, yeah.
If they look at it and say, we want to award them three hundred, that would still go through.
I can tell you one thing that, that's going to really, really great on your application as well is your nonprofit board is a they're in front of the curve ball. They already have their nonprofit status. They already have the building. They already have all the information and sponsors. They're ready to apply. They're ready to apply to the state. Um, they have their architect engineer on board. So they're, they're in front of we did a project last year for daycare and they hadn't even applied for the five oh one C three. So this board is ready and it's going to look really great in their application.
That's all right. I know, I know we're going to, uh, to talk about our court, our, uh, strategic plan here in a bit, but, uh, I think we all recognize it of the top three priorities, childcare alphabetically was number one. Three, but, uh, but you know, so we, I think, I think from my perspective, it's time, this is, this is the way the city can contribute. We're already seeing a lot more contribution on the private side of things, you know, through this board and, and, and through their sponsors. So, you know, I, I don't think it's a huge ask from where I'm sitting or, uh, for the city to, uh, to come up with the seventy five hundred dollars. That's just my opinion. Now I put it to you. Now I put it to the council. Uh, would somebody care to make a motion, number one, for the city to be the sponsor?
Sponsor for the C D B G.
For the C D B G application.
That would be.
With that?
You'd be doing a lot of the work on this.
Um.
No, no, that's why they're getting, that's why we're going to.
I'm on the board.
Yeah, seventy five hundred dollars, but he's, he's done a lot of.
And then a lot of work.
Yeah. Hey.
Still moved, still moved.
Hey, Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Trigger seconds. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries for zero. And now to the second part, which is the financial component, there's an ask of, of a, of an amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. That is a not to exceed amount for ransom to do the grant writing and application. Would somebody care to make that motion?
Oh, well.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unless, did you, did you vote?
Uh, yeah, I.
I, all right, very good.
I made a motion.
I made a motion.
Pretended media.
That's me, yeah.
No, I mean, you could have been abstaining for some reason. And so I just want to make sure. All right.
Paul, would you like me to say for your strategic planning, will you have any more questions there?
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think you're fine. Thank you so much.
Hold me if you have any questions.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Drive safe.
I will be seeing you very soon.
Very good.
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, next item up is resolution, resolutions. This is just a resolution, right? Twenty twenty-two dash oh five, which is a code enforcement action, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So this is similar to what we did at the last meeting, uh, for three properties, uh, which we're, we're working through that process right now. Uh, this is another property that Doug Dick has brought to our attention. We've, we've gone through the similar deal where we've, uh, done a owners and accumbrances report, uh, found the condition to be, uh, in need of some, well, to be in disrepair and in need of some remediation. Um, and so what you have there is a copy of the report from Doug, uh, and there's complete with pictures on that. This one's been on the list for a little while as well. It's not been, uh, maintained. The way I understand it is that the owner is, or the owners are no longer in the community. Uh, but they have kind of a proxy here who pays for the grounds to be mowed. They really haven't done anything to the building. So, um, what we find is that it meets the qualifications to be a structurally unfit for human occupation or a dangerous structure, uh, deterioration on that. And so what we're asking for, uh, with the resolution is to set a public hearing date, much like we did last time, uh, within thirty days. So it'd be September twentieth, uh, we have a public hearing for this where the, uh, owners could come in and then make a case or provide some sort of resolution as to how they're going to, uh, put the property into compliance with their city codes. Uh, or, you know, the other, the other thing is if, if they choose not to, then we'll have a, an opportunity to do that for them and charge it back, uh, as a property need. So, uh, we kind of talked about the process last time. And if you have, Andrew could answer any of those questions if you have any uh, about that, but it's, it's really just the same, same sort of process, only with the new, uh, new property.
Any questions? Hearing none, accept a motion to adopt and approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh five. And I guess that's authorizing me to sign it as well. And, uh, who would care to make that motion? Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman by seconds? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, councilman Driggers, councilman McCarty, councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Most, the res, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh five is approved. The mayor will sign. Uh, now we're into, uh, the discussion items on our agenda. And first item up is trash rate proposal. So I guess it's fortuitous that you're here, David. We're going to talk about trash rates. So Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, so, you know, when you think about sanitation, um, the primary drivers that are people and gasoline, diesel fuel, uh, and then truck maintenance, which we've had, uh, just a lot of, a lot of issues with the, the diesel fuel, obviously. We're, we're definitely going to be far over our, our allotted budget for what we planned for diesel fuel this year. Uh, I've also had a lot of issues with the trucks, um, having to get them serviced, even the new truck we bought in nineteen. You know, it's still under warranty, but we have, in order to get it serviced under warranty, we have to take it to either Salina, Great Bend, or, or Wichita. And when we do that, it ends up being out of service for sometimes multiple weeks, uh, in order to get it serviced. And a lot of times, some of the things we end up with don't actually get covered under warranty. So, uh, we've had a lot going on with that. Uh, we haven't touched trash rates since two thousand and fourteen. Um, the current recycling fee structure, which is a little unique, started in two thousand and seventeen and was last touched, I think, in nineteen. So what we would propose, you know, is to, to look at increasing the rates on the trash side. Uh, you know, looking at kind of where we need to be to, to balance out the budget and where we need to be to be saving for equipment replacement. We felt that, uh, fourteen, about fifteen, it's a little less than fifteen percent uh, increase on the base fee for that. And then as we look at how our dumpsters for commercial go, they, they're based on that initial fee. They're kind of just cycled through based on how many times a week you get picked up things. Uh, so our, our trash, current trash rate is twelve seventy-five. What we would propose to do is go to fourteen sixty-six. Um, and that would apply to residential people and commercial customers who have just the basic poly cards. Uh, and then from there, the commercial rates are, are based on that. So they would multiply out as, as you would go from there. Recycling is a totally different deal. It's an interesting system we have. We actually have a surcharge for recycling. So, uh, what you pay at your house is two dollars and fifty-three cents. Um, and what any business in town is, they also pay two dollars and fifty-three cents regardless of how much they, they put in a recycling, regardless of how many times we have to go and get it. Uh, so we've got several people, well, there, there's one customer in town that we know has a, a six yard and an eight yard recycling dumpster that gets dumped weekly. They still pay two dollars and fifty-three cents. Even though we're going out to them every, every week, we're touching both those things, uh, with a huge, you know, that's seventeen times more volume than your, your normal commercial can, your red, your residential can. Um, so what we would propose there is to, is to change the rate a little bit, uh, to increase the recycling fee. Uh, because it really doesn't cover the right amount, uh, as it is as a base charge. But then to structure that rate for commercial customers, similar to how dumpsters are structured for, to pour, uh, trash. And so the larger you have and the more times you pick up, the larger the rate would be. Uh, we still put the rate or at least the proposed rate here is still forty percent cheaper than the trash rate. So there's still incentive there to recycle. It's just not two dollars and fifty-three cents, which to me seems pretty unfair, honestly. So that's one of the things we would like to correct. We also have some other issues we'd like to correct within the trash, uh, dumpster. We had, we have problems with people taking dumpsters and, you know, using them for extended periods of time. So we want to change that language. Uh, we have some other kind of smaller fee things, but, um, you know, what we're really talking about is is the, is the trash rate, which we need to address, um, for the fiscal health of the trash sanitation budget. Uh, and then fixing some of this recycling stuff. And one of the things we, we would potentially benefit from is if, uh, Fort Riley goes back to receiving our recycling. Uh, then presumably the county would reduce the charge that they charge us to do that. Right now they charge us the difference uh, in costs to get it from, from the transfer station to South Hutchinson, which is a good deal. It's really is, it's a good deal. Uh, but it's still, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars extra a year that we weren't paying, uh, when it was going to Fort Riley. So, you know, if that was to continue and they were to go back to doing Fort Riley, then we may could, maybe could talk about that, but there's still uh, going to be a gap in, in how much we charge for recycling and what it actually costs us to do it. And so these are, these are things we need to look at and consider. Um, you know, we've got the rates there. I'm happy to answer any kind of questions for you.
So one that jumped out at me is the second cart on your residential. You're doing that differently than you have been.
Yeah, we decided, you know, give, give cost break there on the second cart, uh, because we're going to be there picking it up anyway. I'm back in a second, you know, making a second trip or anything like that. So, uh, it, that's actually pretty common in trash, uh, trash rates. If you, if you sign up for a second cart, you get it at a reduced cost. Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's one of those things. We haven't touched it in almost eight years. Um, costs have not gone down this year. They have gone dramatically up. I don't know that we can argue diesel fuel cost is going to go down anytime in the near future. It possibly can, but you know, when we budgeted for it last year, for this year, I was looking at three dollars and seventy cents. That, that's kind of the high number. And now we're well over five dollars most of the time. So we, we're blowing through it. So uh, something's going to have to give on the, on the trash side.
So residents with, that are currently paying twelve seventy-five per cart, but actually see a reduction in their, in their rate under your new rate. If for the, because of the reduction on the second.
If, yeah, if they were doing the two cards, yeah. So they would see a little bit of reduction. Uh, the surcharge would, would go up, um, right? Yeah. And the interesting thing about the way it's structured on the cycling surcharge is that it's, it's a surcharge. It's not a fee. So you can't opt out of it. Everybody pays it regardless of whether they choose to use it or not.
Do we have, uh, do we have, uh, have you considered, uh, uh, you have a second cart for trash, right? That, what about on the recycling side?
Yeah, we just, i- if somebody wants a second cart, it just comes with the trash. So you, you're still paying that two, like, again, you're paying that two fifty-three. You have two carts. You have two carts. Uh, if you have one, you have one.
So there's no extra fee for the second?
Not now. Uh, but you could certainly add that to this conversation.
I would think that that would make sense.
Yeah, that would make sense to do that. I didn't think about the second card.
Because we're to the point where we're almost needing the second recycling cart as opposed to another trash.
Trash barrel, yeah. Yeah, it's a, you know, it's a fine, a fine line because, uh, you know, recycling, when, when we had a market for recyclable goods made a ton of sense. Uh, it was a profitable business for some people. Now that there's no market for it, it's the bottom has dropped out of it. And so it's costing us more, uh, unfortunately than to get rid of recycling and it's, you're in the trash in some cases. Um, you know, I don't want to be cynical and say, well, shouldn't you just take the recycling to dump, you know, where the trash goes? Economically, that probably does make some sense, but that's not going to serve the purpose of recycling.
But it's not going to the landfill.
No, it's not. I want to make that very clear. It doesn't go to the landfill. It goes to.
So, so the purpose of recycling is to, is to, uh, keep things from going into the landfill. And so even if yes, even if we have to pay more for it, it's more earth friendly, if you will, to do, to do that. That's still the right thing to do.
And I use it over too. I mean, I, I went with Dale down there with it, looked around the recycling place and, you know, like, yeah. Stuff over here, stuff over there, they separate and they, they reuse the stuff, send it somewhere and get it reused. Doesn't go from there, it doesn't go to landfill either. People throw away some stuff.
Oh, yeah. We've got lots of stories. David could tell you all kinds of stories about what people throw on their recycling carts.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
And they do throw a lot of trash away. They get a lot of trash in the recycle centers. Booster Hall thirteen, fourteen, thirty tons out of a recycle center in Blackstone on a daily basis.
I don't believe that.
But it, it's not a clean recycling for everybody.
Any other questions?
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, some people, I know that they'd be actually to pick up big stuff, right? Some people put stuff out and they're having it picked up like in their yards for a month or more. I don't know if that's a problem we can address because I have that problem in my neighborhood. I don't know if that's a problem we can address, cause I have that problem in my neighborhood.
Yeah, we have that quite a bit. Um, we do, we do, uh, bulky item pickup once a month. It's actually this Friday. It's usually the last Friday of the month, and it's ten dollars for each piece, but we ask people to call ahead.
If they never call ahead, never pay, it just stays.
We pick it up and charge them anyway.
Oh, do you charge them for it anyway? That's good. Wondered about that.
Usually it take, it can take some time to do that. It's not like we do it every.
I had a first, I had a, well, you know why. Pick up my trash. You see what's in the yard next to my house.
Yeah, and we ask people not to put it out at the beginning of the month. Wait till the last week of the month and they'll throw it out the first week of the month.
I know, it's, yeah. Okay, thank you. That answers that question.
Any other questions? So that'll be, uh, this will be on our, is there any direction? I mean, we talked about maybe adding a second, uh, second, uh, container, uh, charge for recycling. Other than that, is there anything else you would wanna see? Okay.
Has anybody done a study or anything on what we're gonna need is a, a second trash truck? Or is that part of this discussion or not? Yeah, I think it is part of the discussion. We really, uh, the, the second trash truck with the backup truck we have now used to be the primary unit. It's a back, uh, back load. It's, it's got a tipper on the back, so you can, you can actually pick up the carts with it, but you have to have multiple people. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we switched to the side load. Um, so what we really could benefit from would be to have a secondary truck that is a side load car, uh, with the scorpion arm to, to grab that and we could do residential, uh, which is where we spend a good deal of time. You know, the, the one we have is, it has mechanical issues. It's old. Um, you know, and it, it doesn't, uh, doesn't quite meet our needs a lot of the time, but it, you know, it is serviceable. We just have to have more people on it, uh, when we do things, which is kind of defeats the purpose of going to the, the side load anyway. So, yeah, having that second residential truck, I think would be a good, good investment for us. Uh, we also put a ton of time and hours on, on the current truck. Um, and so if we could figure out a way to, to cut that back, I think that would be, you know, for the long term of the asset.
So does your rate change that you're proposing here, does that allow for us to build up some capital that we could use towards that purchase?
Yeah, it, it kind of factors in that we, you know, talking about fifteen, twenty thousand a year that could be built up for that. A used unit like that, anywhere from eighty to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Can you get one?
Yeah, yeah.
Are they available?
They're out there.
Okay.
Uh, especially if you're.
I mean, some, certain pieces of equipment are pretty hard to come by right now.
This is true. This is true. So, yeah, it's out there. It just was, it might take us a little bit to, to build up enough cash to do it. But, yeah, I think that this, this factors in that.
Well, what's, what's a reasonable amount of time to build up that cash? I mean, are we gonna need one sooner than three years?
Well, it depends on how, how well mechanical works on the other.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, you know, was, I mean, worst case scenarios, seems like we maybe need, be thinking two years or.
Yeah.
Instead of three.
But if you had that, you could also finance and use that money to pay the finance off. It would just be the same. Same five years.
Like if you've done with other pieces of equipment.
Uh, it'd be the same five years to pay for it, kind of, front loader or back loader.
Right, and we do have some, uh, contingency money set up in, in that fund. Uh, we're using it right now to pay for diesel fuel. But, uh, there is, there is a little bit of balance in there that could be used to, to allocate towards something like that. So we could pay for por- portion of it with cash and then finance the rest. If that's something we needed to do.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm like everybody here. We don't like raising rates, but I could see down the road, or this might be a big problem. Let's produce something about this. Sooner the better, probably.
Yeah, trash is one of those businesses that's, uh, it's pretty direct. I mean, we know exactly kind of where it costs there. There's nothing, there's not a whole lot out there, like in the water department where you've got a lot of buried infrastructure. I mean, you got a truck, you got the carts and you know, you're gonna have to pick them up at seven.
One thing you know when he does his job, cause it's gone.
And we do, and we do an awesome job. I would say we do an awesome job with it, but, but, yeah, I mean, we're, we're limited with what we can do.
Can I chime in at all? That's okay.
Yeah.
Chime in.
Uh, the reason for the side load is to, uh, take the relief off the truck we have now and use it. And quit, try to quit using the old truck. Use it for commercial and that'll be our backup with the sidearm. If anything happens on the residential can, on that side loader, then we always have an extra side loader to pick up instead of running somebody off the back with a tipper.
Right. Makes sense. Yep. All right. Last call. Any more questions from that, that item? Hearing none, we will move on to our strategic quarterly strategic plan update, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So I'm gonna kind of go through this relatively quickly. Uh, childcare, we talked a lot about that. Uh, we've got the nonprofit board set up. It's got the extension on it, uh, health department, US the, well, Max, Max Heinrichs, uh, former USD support and superintendent. Uh, but we also have another person, Carl Harmon from, uh, USD four-ten on that. Uh, the hospital, Mark Rooker is on that board too. Got a parent representative and talking with, talking with the few folks, uh, about, we're working with a couple of big donors on that. I think we'll be able to make that, that match, um, relatively easily. You know, we've got Trinity, Trinity Menonite is, is giving the facility, which is awesome. That really helps a bunch. Um, and we're working through that process. And so I think this is something that we'll move forward with and it, it really is very much needed in the community. And hopefully we can, can get it to, get that project to fruition. Uh, we were talking about the old, uh, hospital originally for the site. We've kind of shifted gears on that. We've, we're kind of focusing on housing, but there's also opportunity potentially for a building trade school. Um, they need some, some, uh, space to do instruction there. And so that might be an opportunity to use that space too. Um, we're working all the angles with it. Uh, with housing, we've been doing that. We've finished that hat, uh, survey and we're, we're looking at putting in an application for the, uh, moderate income housing through Kansas, Kansas Housing Resource Commission. Uh, that's another grant, uh, and that's, that would be an opportunity to give down payment assistance to people to build new houses. Uh, it's actually modeled off a couple of other programs. Marion has a similar program. Uh, and then we would, you know, maybe, maybe be able to do something with that. Got a local builder who's interested in putting in a few homes, uh, using lots from the land bank, uh, slab on grade, three bedroom, two baths, two car garage, right around two hundred thousand, which is sort of where we wanna be. Uh, if we could get that price lower, that would be awesome. But I don't know how you build a house for less than two hundred thousand dollars nowadays. I don't know how you would do that, but, um, so we've got a couple of people there. I, I talked with, uh, the owner of the lots over by the Menonite Brethren Church. Uh, they are paying off their specials. They actually just paid their last payment on specials. Uh, he's only gotten built one house out there and may have an interest in partnering with us on those lots too. Uh, and so that might be an opportunity to, to have more, more lots there to build houses on. Uh, we're also looking at neighborhood revitalization. I'm hoping to have a, a presentation for you, uh, to talk about that a little bit more. The county does it right now. I think we could do better, uh, or at least participate and, and make it a little bit more robust. Uh, so that's something that's gonna be coming your way. That's the housing piece. And of course, we, uh, we did the alternative housing construction overlay district and that project is still moving. Felix is working on, on his site plan, so he's working through all the specifics of what we need from him in order to do this project. And then if he gets to that point, he'll go through the public hearing process and then we'll, we'll see something from there hopefully. But I still think he's a few months out from, from even getting into that, so. Uh, workforce, this is one we've been working on. I mentioned the building trade school, so, um, we've been working with Butler Community College on that. Uh, we had reps from the city, uh, four-ten, Tabor, Building Center, Elcon. Uh, I guess technically the county commission too. Jonah was here from both. Uh, and so we've met and talked about it, and I, I think there's some really some, some positive options for bringing a building trades program to, to Hillsborough and to serve Marion County. Uh, and that would be for electricians, plumbers, carpentry, uh, all the building trades. There's a couple of models that Butler has used in the past and I think would work really well. Uh, we're just trying to figure out, A, is there enough student demand there to support it? And, you know, where, where would we house this thing? Uh, that's where the hospital discussion kind of came up. Uh, might be a great first project for them to help renovate the, the hospital space, right? Uh, especially if we need HVAC and some of those other things in there, so.
What, what is this? What is the minimum students that it makes sense?
Magic number for them is ten. Um, I think based on our conversations in the room, looking at the county, we wouldn't have a hard time filling ten. Uh, that would include Marion, Peabody, Gossel, Center, some of those other districts too. So that's kind of their magic.
It works similar to what we have with the welding, where they, the seniors in high school and going through it.
Seniors and juniors, uh, they could go. The, the idea, at least under a couple of the models, is that they would go concurrent enrollment. And then when they graduated from high school, they would graduate with certificate and whatever it is, their, their trade is, so. Uh, and then they can move into apprenticeship and go sit for licensing tests. We are desperately in need of, of contractors in this, in this county. And so we can get more plumbers, we can get more electricians, we can get more HVAC people. We're, we're doing ourselves a huge favor. Um, and so, you know, we're trying to help push through that. And I, I feel really positive about that. And I think there's gonna be some, I hate to rely on grants, but I think there's gonna be some grant opportunities to help fund some of that too. Um, there's actually maybe some partnerships with, uh, heating and air cop, like train or, uh, some of the tool companies. They, they do support some of these schools too, so. Could be a really, really cool, really cool thing if we can pull it together.
The, uh, you know, and then there's the, the community college, uh, component, you know, the, uh, terms of advanced education. And then Tabor tying in with their, uh, their new entrepreneurship, uh, school and program, where, you know, a student could go through and become a certified tradesperson, but if they wanted to think about running their own business, they could actually go through and potentially, uh, the vision is to, uh, to have an opportunity for a four-year, uh, four-year degree program tied into it, so.
Working, working a lot of angles. I think there's a lot of good energy there and a lot of potential. So, uh, speaking of the center for the entrepreneurship program at Tabor, we've been working with them. Uh, Lou and I met with Dr. Jansen several times on this. Uh, and we've got an MOU that we're developing to help fund the entrepreneurship center there. Uh, they received an outside grant to help pay for that, uh, as well. So, sounds like we're moving forward with that. And I don't know how much we can talk about the grant they got, but.
They're probably not.
Probably not.
That, that will be for them to.
They'll figure that part out, yeah. So we, we've got an MOU that we're working on and going back and forth a little bit on, and hopefully we'll have in front of you guys at the next meeting. Um, I need to get it back to Andrew so he can have a look at it. We tweaked a few things, but nothing major. Um, so, yeah, that would be where we would help fund one of their positions and give them a little bit of money to just get started on renovating it. They've talked about using the old welcome center. It's kind of the launching place for that. Uh, they're hoping to build a new building, I think, in the near future, but.
But, but if we're talking about that, what we're, what the MOU did, you, you, you can't just leave it hanging out there. I mean, you gotta say something about it.
Right. So the MOU, yeah, what, what we would have is the, to fund the, the center for entrepreneurship, uh, which is kind of what Tabor's calling us, uh, the working title. Uh, we would, we would fund twenty thousand dollars, which is the one mill we levy for economic development, uh, toward the, toward the center. Um, they would have certain targets they would have to meet, including, uh, serving, you know, a certain number of people in the community, not just students, uh, providing educational programming. Hopefully working through our e-community, uh, loans and then kind of working through that to initiate some loans. The ultimate goal is to have them generate businesses that would hopefully start here and survive here. Um, they're also co-op-ing it with, you know, the educational piece. They're trying to serve students too, uh, which I think works really well. Uh, we also talked about education, so bringing more entrepreneurship education into the grade school and middle school and high school here, trying to build more partnerships there, more educational pipeline. The idea is that that's where our future lies. Uh, we're gonna be most successful with entrepreneurship in the future. That's where we've had our success in the past. Uh, and so, you know, if we can get more kids interested in thinking that way, then we can, you know, show them an, an opportunity to stay here and maybe start a business here. Uh, there, there will be failures, no doubt, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity. I think it's a great partnership and, and we'll talk a little.
But in a nuts, in a nutshell, from, I guess what I wanted to point out is rather than having a city funded position, we are going to contract with Tabor to provide those services that we were funding as a paid position with benefits and all those other things. And, uh, ask them and through this partnership to provide those services and more. So basically, take those dollars and expand their, their, uh, their, their impact by this partnership. That's the reason for, that's the, that's the modus operandi, if you will, behind the, the idea is to take our money and make it work better, make it work harder by a partnership. And, uh, it's, it's an opportunity for the city and Tabor to connect in a way that I don't think we've ever done before. And so I'm excited about that.
It's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll work really well. Um, and that they're thinking the same way, and so that makes it, that makes it easy. Honestly, we didn't have to sell them on that idea at all. So. Uh, let's see. Other things, we've had some, we've talked about other populations, immigrant population resettlement things. Haven't really gotten anywhere with that. Uh, we are gonna have a block party. It, it's not gonna be on the twenty-seventh, it's gonna be on the twelfth. For students, the, the welcome back party tying in with the, uh, chamber cruise night and the movie night. Uh, it's actually part of orientation, so we're gonna have a big kind of a hoodoo down here in front of City Hall. Uh, I hope to include a job fair, so that if there's businesses out there looking for students to work in their business, this is an opportunity to connect with them because they're all gonna be here, all five hundred or six hundred of them. So, uh, it's a great opportunity. We're gonna be sending some more information out about that.
Is there a rumor about somebody get dunked?
Uh, yeah, there is. So there's gonna be a dunk tank. I don't even wanna spoil who's gonna be in the dunk tank, but, uh, it's gonna be fun, I think. It's gonna be a real good time, so.
Hope it's warm.
It'll be warm.
Uh, community development stuff, you know, we're, we're still kind of pushing through some of those things. The splash park will be completed. The, hopefully the last construction thing, votes has started on the restroom. Last construction thing I heard was the beginning of September. Uh, they may be able to push that up a little bit. We'll see. Um, so I was hoping to be done sooner than that, but it's kind of where we're at. Um, so that's moving forward. Uh, the gardening club, if you haven't taken a look at that, that project's really ticking off. Uh, they've been handing out free produce, I think, every Tuesday night. Um, so it's been a really cool project there. Our friends at Our Town Development, we keep meeting with them and talking about some, some opportunities. We spent a lot of time talking about the golf course, uh, last time, and, uh, we're gonna meet again next week. Um, hopefully doing some more work with Main Street. We've been putting them in touch with businesses directly to provide services, which I think has worked fairly well, uh, when the businesses actually engage with them. So it's, it's been kind of an interesting learning experience there, but I think it's been pretty profitable so far. Um, planning commission is gonna start work on the comprehensive plan on Thursday. Uh, so we're moving forward with that. Uh, financial stability piece, we're still waiting on, uh, CIP from EBH. Um, still looking at the fee schedule. We're still adjusting those things. We talked about water rates. Uh, we just talked about refuse rates today. We'll probably have to talk about electrical rates at some point too. Um, so the debt service on the, the family aquatic center pays off next year. Uh, some of that is tied to our, our continuing debt service plan that Greg Barnburg brought up. Uh, and so we need to, need to be cautious with how we proceed with that, but there's, there is a need to start thinking about what we're gonna do with that um, as we move forward. And we'll talk about that again next, next week, uh, when we discuss budget again. So, uh, we'll have a little bit more to talk about there too. Um, on the public safety side of the house, we've completed some of those things, including the EMS building. The fire department, we're still working on trying to find some programs and, and funding for that. And so that's one of the things that actually ran tonight, had a conversation about that too. So there may be some things out there for that. And so that's one of the things that actually ran tonight, had a conversation about that too, so there may be some things out there for that. I already answered any questions you have. I feel like I've been talking forever. But we, we've got a lot of irons in the fire as far as the strategic plan goes. We've been pushing a lot of things forward. I think we're making progress in a lot of areas too. It's just, uh, it's a, it's a process, so.
Any questions, comments? I would say that, uh, since, at least since I've been mayor and, uh, those of you that have been on the council longer. Uh, I don't remember ever having this many things going on at the same time. You know, and, and not just, not just in, in, uh, the, on the administrative side, but in every department, every city department. We've got projects, we've got things going on and we've got people coming across and, and from different departments and, and. And helping out and jumping in and, and coming up with unique ideas and. And it's just been a real treat for me to sit back and, and kind of, kind of just shake my head in amazement. At how much we're, we've got going on. I mean, there really is a lot and, and, uh, you know, to, uh, Matt's credit. He still gets pushed by me all the time and, uh, you know, uh. I'm, I'm ready to get out there and, 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 and be a little foolish and go splash in my swimsuit, you know, as soon as I can, so. So.
Yeah, there you go.
I do have, uh, we have, uh, on, on the project side, we, we've, uh, we've let, uh. We've approved, we've approved the, uh, park, park, uh, shelter re, repairs. Do we have any updates on that?
Uh, I think they've put the order in for the metal, but I think that's gonna be a little bit of time to get that.
Are we gonna get that done this?
Yeah, I'm hoping so. It just depends on what they can give us.
Yeah, some of that stuff's beyond our control.
Yeah, it is, but it's, it's still frustrating. We've seen some of that come, come through and some things are just random too. You get things that you didn't expect to see that come in, but. Some other things that are pretty normal, you just can't get what it is.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on to the, uh, city administrator's report. You've been giving us a lot of reports. Can't believe there's more.
There is.
But wait.
Uh, last week we had our server go down, which was, you don't realize how much runs through your server until it doesn't work. Uh, including all of our email and everything else. And so, uh, when the, when the server, every Wednesday at two o'clock, our, our backup generator is kicking on an exercise for half an hour. Something happened in the, uh, the UPS, which is the uninterrupted power source, the backup power. Uh, so when it clicked off, something happened and it ruined one of the components in the server that allows the drives to talk to one. Uh, and so we were down for over a day and a half, uh, and then we had it up, we got it back up off of update. So we ended up losing, poor Karen, lost like a day and a half of her work in the utility department and. Uh, we've, we've managed to get back from that, but it's just one of those things like, hey, you gotta really be prepared for that when it happens. Um, we are planning on switching to Microsoft three sixty-five, so that would move the hosting of our email out. And actually it's a lot safer. That was one of the reasons why we were, uh, talking about doing that, but this has actually pushed that a little bit more to the front. Uh, we're hoping to, you know, get some things done and, and hopefully prevent some issues from us happening again. But it, it's just one of those things, it's frustrating and it happens every once in a while, but. Uh, good news is our backup system worked really well and we were able to restore off of it. And Lloyd and the guys over at Great Plains did an awesome job. They worked a lot to, to get us back up, so good job for that. Uh, I wanna let you guys know, we got a forestry grant from the fire department, fifty fifty matching, uh, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Uh, that will be used to replace some wildland fighting firefighter gear, so turnout gear for wildland fires, grass fires. Uh, we got nine sets of that replaced. Uh, we're actually got another grant that we're putting in through emergency management for some. Additional turnout gear, boots, helmets, gear and other things, uh, gloves, which are all expensive, but we've, we've been super fortunate. And been able to get some of those grants and be able to replace those things. Uh, speaking of fire department grants, we, we survived a FEMA audit. They gave us the a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars plus. Back in twenty twenty for, uh, replacing our structural firefighting gear. Uh, and I'm happy to report that we went through the financial monitoring process, which is sort of like going through a. What's the word? Possessed by the devil.
Oh, yeah.
Like, it's, it's kind of like that, like, uh, it, it is, it is, they will change your life, let me tell you. And, um, you take their money and they're, they're good about the exorcism. That's the one I was thinking about. But we managed to get through it and, uh, Ben's guys did an awesome job of keeping the records appropriately. We got a clean bill of health from FEMA, which allows us to apply for more in the future, so that's great. Uh, just so you're aware, there's been some initial conversations about a school resource officer. Uh, didn't start at our level, it started at the school board level. Um, there's some, there's some funding through Department of Justice that could pay for that position for three years. But the question is always, what do you do after the three years? Um, and so, you know, the school board is, is kind of talked about that. Uh, there may be some kind of partnership there with Tabor. I don't know, with, it's, it's out there and it's being, that conversation is being had. It didn't start with us, but, you know, we're obviously gonna be brought into it. If it's something that involves the police department, so. Just to let you know, that wouldn't, and that wouldn't happen until the twenty-three, twenty-four school year anyway, but. You know, it's a thing that's happening. We wanna let you know. Uh, Scheffler's House Doll, uh, there was a big front page article in the Free Press about that. I attached some other information. So Luis Scheffler's Doll, nineteen oh six doll was restored by, uh, Over the Rainbow Doll Club. Uh, pretty cool story about how all that happened and Sue kind of details that there and will spend a ton of time on it. But, uh, pretty cool that they, they came and redid that doll. It looks really cool. It's, it's a nice, nice piece and it's back in the museum now, so. Uh, disc golf signs, the CDB helped, uh, fund some tee box signs for our disc golf course. There's anticipating a, a hundred disc golf players coming into the area. The, the disc golf is a really big deal. Uh, I didn't realize that really until we started talking about it, but, um, putting these tee box signs up will help, help them. Uh, attract more players to these tournaments that they're trying to do. Um, we're also still working on getting the tee box pads, which was a, a school project from the seniors last year. We've got some funding through the community foundation. We just haven't been able to get everybody together to actually put them in, so. Uh, September tenth, which is the week before arts and crafts, there's gonna be a big disc golf competition here. See how it goes. Sounds like it's gonna be pretty good. Uh, Freedom Claims Management, I got the, uh, net savings for the, the savings report we get from the monthly. This actually the first year, so fifty-six thousand we managed to save this year. Uh, we've retained all that, so that sits in a fund that pays our claims. Uh, and next year, we're gonna hit our actuarial amount and so we'll be able to actually reduce some of what we pay into that. Looking forward to that. It's working really well. That I can't say enough about how they've serviced that plan for us too. It's, it's been really positive. Uh, and then you got the KPP bill. You may have noticed when we approved vouchers, it was like half a million dollars and that's. Large part of that is our, our power bill, which in the summertime jumps up significantly. Uh, so two hundred and sixty-one thousand of that was our, uh, KPP bill for June. Uh, it's one of our, it's, this is kind of where we enter our, our large billing months, so June bill through October bill. Usually the weather's hot and so people run ACs. This is where we'll see the big ones. Um, surcharge based on kind of what we're doing with that. We've, for the last sixteen months have collected three hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred. And that, we're still about seventy thousand-ish behind, um, from when we did that, so, uh, that is what's happening. That's all I got. I'm pretty tired.
Everybody's kept up with all that, right?
Totally. All right, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
If you have any questions, you can ask anytime.
I had, I do have one question. We talked about fire. Any updates on our brush truck?
Yeah, they, uh, there's still not an official build date, but Ben was saying sometime in December, we might actually get.
Get a date or when it actually might.
Like, we might get a chassis, is what he's saying. I was like, okay, I'll, I'll hold my breath. We'll, we'll wish on that one, I don't know.
Thanks. Any other questions? Um, we are now to our final public comment section and, uh. Uh, David, is there anything else? I mean, you came to observe and, and, uh, so hopefully this has been educational for you. Certainly timely from the trash rate discussion perspective, right? And we appreciate your input there. Um, I see no other members of the public online, so we will move on to council comments. And I will give the gentleman, uh, defer to the gentleman online. Councilman Lowen, any comments today?
None today.
Councilman Bye.
I don't have anything for you.
Councilman McCarthy.
Nothing.
Councilman Driggers.
Yeah, I'd say I want to comment on what, you, you commented on how many projects are going on. What, what I'd wanna comment on is I'd like to see how much interaction there is between school system and. Tabor and, you know, all these programs coming together to talk about stuff. That's really encouraging. So, just, I'm glad to see that. Keep that up.
I don't know how else we move the ball. We don't all work together, so. Yeah.
No one entity can, can, uh, can, can do that and, you know, as a community, we certainly proven. Uh, you know, in the, in the conversation and in by action, that both public and private funds. Can make positive things happen for our community and, you know, certainly have a shining example there at, uh, at Tabor. You know, with the stadium, the track and, and so forth, that, that collaboration with USD four ten and Tabor. You know, has really been a boon to the community and, and not only that, but then Tabor's collaboration on the edu. The college courses and so forth and, and so we just, I agree with you, Brett. We just need to keep that up. That's how we keep the ball rolling and keep our community moving forward. Those are huge assets, even, even, uh, even alone, but, but not any one of those assets can, can make it all happen. All the things happen that we really need to happen as a community, so. Any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.